Pursuant to the Open Public Needs Act, after 231 Public Law of 1975, this notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on July 8, 2024, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of July 12, 2024. All Menaceville clerks of the championship within the borough and the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of the postings have been met on July 8, 2024. I'm trying to go slow through this. Would you please rise and join Antonio Leonardo from Marlboro High School in the class?
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it discussed any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda, this is pre-printed. The word also discussed for exception number three, the student discipline report, and in exception number seven, the matter under Agency Reference Number 2024-3743.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 26, 2024 Board Meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. McCaffrey, second. Ms. Capiello? Yes. Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rassitola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Coward?
Yes.
Mrs. Sibley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. A reminder, communications are on file in the Board Secretary's office. And now we're going to have Dr. Hazel's superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening, everyone. We have an exciting evening, and some of our artists in the district will be receiving awards this evening. So we're really excited. But for the superintendent's report, I wanted to advise the Board and our community. The Freehold Regional High School District will be going a Middle States evaluation. That visit is taking place December 9 through the 12th. The process begins, and we're pretty much through it, with a self-study, where administrators and constituents from the district come together. We outline goals for ourselves that will take us through a seven-year process. It is an accreditation process that we'll be going through. And an esteemed team of volunteer educators come and visit our district. They come and visit all of our schools and the central office. There's a full, comprehensive report that they provide us. And this is really just kind of validation for the school district that we are meeting the markers in areas of governance, student well-being, instruction and program in our teaching and learning process. So it's a lot of work on our part. We love that self-evaluation process because it's really a validation of the tremendous work that we're doing in the district and gives us an opportunity to be able to learn and grow from other educators that are visiting our district. On the heels of that, in March, once again feels like it was just yesterday that our district will be going through a Q-SAC evaluation, and that's through the Department of Education. It is something that occurs every three years. The areas for that evaluation are in instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, operations, personnel, and also instruction and program as well. The Department of Education, they come in. They also come in and visit schools. We go through a district performance review. It is different than a Middle States they'll study, but I'm kind of happy they're both in the same year because our district will be, you know, fully primed and ready. But our county office officials come in, visit schools, talk with stakeholders, and that process is a one-day visit, and that's March 5. Also, we have an award winner in the room, Rebecca Pola Castro. Oh, there she is in the back. New Jersey School Public Relations Association, named Freehold Regional High School District as a winner in the 24 School Communications Award Contest. And this was a winning image that Mrs. Pola Castro took. It was during Howell High School's 40th anniversary celebration of the Fine and Performing Arts Magnet Program. The picture was taken in June, but she had an award of merit in the photography category. So we're really excited about that, and we will be posting that on our website.
Congratulations.
Yes, good job. Also exciting news. The College Board announced that all six of the Freehold Regional High School District schools were named to the 2024 Advanced Placement Program, the school honor roll. All of our schools received distinction. And the distinction is based on enrollment, the scores that the students attain on the exams. Credit, if they get a three or higher, is potential credit at the college or university that they attend. And also, there is a component in this metric where they are looking at ninth and 10th graders' enrollment in AP courses as well. As most of our administrators and our supervisors know, this is a district that takes great pride in opening up access for students, not just in AP courses, but also in honors-level courses. All of our courses that we offer here are at a very rigorous level. But it is a great opportunity for students, and this is open access to all students in our district. So it doesn't surprise me or anyone else that we receive these distinctions, but it is a really nice honor for all of our schools, and it really speaks to the efforts of our teachers and our supervisors who are working with these students at the AP-level classes. So really, congratulations to all of our schools. We had a wonderful band festival on October 8, where all of the bands of the Freehold Regional High School District came together. They perform individually, and then they perform collectively. All six schools perform "God Bless America." And that was on October 8, and the students just did a tremendous job this school year. The weather was on our side as well, but really an enjoyable evening for our musicians, band directors, and all of our parents and community. So that was a wonderful event. We had our Spooktacular Window Painting for 2024. And also, the weather was on our side for that event. And this evening, we are going to honor our winners and our honorable mentions for the Spooktacular Window Painting. But before we proceed into that, I do want to ask if our Board members could please join down below because we're going to move down the screen. Yes, I'm going to do that in a sec. Yep, from down below because you have to change over mics. But if everybody could just take a seat down below, and we will have a presentation. Before we present our award winners for Spooktacular, I'd like to introduce Helena Pace. She is an Executive Student Cabinet Member. She serves on the Superintendent and the Board of Education Cabinet. She is one of six representatives. We have an Executive Student Cabinet Member represented for each of our high schools. So when our board meetings are out at the schools, we'd like to have the students share some of their experience. They're seniors in high school, so they have vast experience here in the Freehold Regional High School District as well as in their school. So I invite you to the podium to share about your experience.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Helena Pace, and I have the honor of serving as the representative from Freehold High School on the Executive Student Cabinet. Tonight, I want to talk about the incredible athletics and extracurricular programs that our school offers and how they shape the culture and climate of the borough community. I speak to you from personal knowledge and experience as I belong to many of Freehold High School's clubs and organizations. I am active in Together We Can, the Dramatic Arts Club, marching band, concert band, and chamber choir. These activities have truly shaped me into the person that I am today. I actually just noted on my college applications that Drama Club has been my most effective teacher in the skills of collaboration and public speaking. Almost every friend I have can be traced back to one or more of my extracurriculars. Our school is a hub of activity, thanks in large part to an assortment of 25 varsity sports and 62 active clubs. Everyone knows about varsity football, but did you know that we also have a sports medicine club to support them from the sidelines as well as an esports gaming club? From cybersecurity to Borough's new book club, there's something for everyone. These programs not only provide students with opportunities to develop their skills and talents, but also foster a sense of camaraderie and school spirit. Participating in athletics and extracurricular activities can make a large school feel small in the best way. They create a positive and inclusive environment where students can feel connected to their peers and supported by their staff advisors and coaches. These programs also help to build character, teach important life lessons, and prepare students for success beyond high school. This is demonstrated by the very way that clubs are formed at Freehold High School, through students taking initiative to create a group activity that will fill a void for not only themselves, but for others. Observing my peers, I see they have learned important skills such as time management, conflict resolution, and more through the time they spend here beyond regular school hours. We grow as individuals by growing together. When you really get down to it, these clubs are little communities within a big community. And the same person you met because you both enjoy chess can quickly become the person who asks you to proofread their essays or the person who helps you learn that tricky unit in calculus. I believe that our school's commitment to athletics and extracurricular activities is essential to creating a thriving learning environment. Participation in after-school activities helps to promote academic achievement, improve student well-being, and foster a sense of pride and belonging. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Helena. I think that's a great intro into our next piece. But before I invite up our Spooktacular Committee members to honor our recipients on their window painting, I would like to share a small video clip. It is about two minutes. It is from the Manalapan High School Brave Cast. We have a TV studio and students who are interested in broadcasting. Mr. Girardi is the teacher who is in charge of the program. And the anchor who you will see here today is Jenna Patterson. Our producer and editor is Gracie Pettner. And script producer, Michael Kurz. I'm not sure if any of them are here this evening. I think, yes, please stand. Jenna did a wonderful job. You will see, she is here, and you will see her interviewing students and teachers and myself in the Spooktacular Committee. So we are going to kick off our Spooktacular celebration with this video from Brave Cast. Thank you.
Hey, Gracie. Jenny Patterson here in Jackson, Freehold, at the annual Spooktacular Window Painting Contest, where ever as these students compete and paint their Halloween-inspired artwork on windows and local businesses in the area. Let's check in with the artists to see how they do. Why did you choose your design?
For my design, it's just simply cute, and also, it's totally candy that comes around during Halloween.
I really think the look is beautiful. It's a towel being, and she's evil. What's been your favorite part about today?
I guess the opportunity to be here with everyone. It's just like showing off all the work and dedication that we all put in. Getting the paint on the windows, seeing the drama characters that I created.
How does it feel to see your students being here in this contest?
It feels great. It's one thing to see the students as they're working on their projects in class on a small sheet of paper, but when they can translate it into, you know, a bigger canvas like this, it makes me proud to then be so successful and have such limited amount of time and do so well in that amount of time.
What's been your biggest challenge today? Probably the shading and the taking of the paintwork done.
I would say the cold.
For those who don't know, can you guys share a little more information about the contest?
The contest started in the '40s, and it was just the Borough High School. And as the district grew, started the window painting program. And it stopped for a few years. We brought it back at least 20 years ago. Now all six high schools are involved, and we have retired artists who are judges. So they're judged by actual professionals.
So we have, this year, we have 76 windows. Just a high school. Kids do a phenomenal job. And it's really just great.
Why are opportunities like these so important for us in the community?
Spooktacular is one of our favorite events in the Freehold Regional High School District. It just gives a tremendous opportunity for the artists of the district to come out and show all of their skills and talents. And we're just so appreciative to the Freehold Spooktacular Committee and to all the folks in the community and in the district and to all the teachers and administrators who make this event possible for all students.
Well, there you have it, Gracie. It's great to be back at Spooktacular as this is for my Brave Cast journey, and my first cycle back in 2022. This is Jenny Patterson. Now back to you guys in the studio.
How terrific. Thank you, Jenny. And please, a big thank you to the Brave Cast team for this spectacular video and for the coverage of the event. We really appreciate it. Just a special thank you to all of our art supervisors and our art teachers across the district who have worked so closely with our artists in preparing for the Spooktacular Window Painting. This is always a program that the students look forward to each year. So really, just a thank you to all the folks in the district who make this possible. Also, Annette Piazza, who I know is here somewhere. I left my glasses up on the top. Where is, oh, where's Miss Piazza?
Back here.
Okay, thank you so much. She put so much time in coordinating this with the Spooktacular Committee. So we thank you for all of your efforts and for all of the time that you put into making this a safe and wonderful event for our students. So at this time, we want to recognize our winners. Special thank you also to Federici's Pizza, who provides lunch for all of us. That's always terrific. But our Spooktacular Committee is here today, and I invite up Maureen Stumpf, the co-chair of the window painting event, and Judy Guy, the co-chair of the window painting event, to present our awards this evening.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So first, I want to say how excited I am to be here presenting the awards in Freehold Borough High School this year on behalf of the Halloween Spooktacular Committee and our co-chairs, Tony Fields and Annette Dorrin. I would like to thank Dr. Hazel and the Board for their continued support. Your cooperation is vital, and without it, we couldn't showcase the artists in our community. We begin planning this event in July, and it is definitely a team effort. So if you could bear with me for a few moments, I would like to thank everyone involved. Tony Fields could not be here tonight due to Rutgers Family Weekend, but she sends her congratulations to all of the students. She's amazed by their talent and is very proud of all of them. Mike Federici of Federici's Restaurant in Freehold, who unfortunately also couldn't be here tonight, has been our sponsor for many, many years. He and his wonderful staff provide lunch for all the students and our teachers. We are so grateful to Federici's for their continued support. I would like to thank Tracy Vaz and all the students at Freehold Intermediate School. They do an outstanding job painting windows at Broad Street Plaza. If you guys haven't gone to see it, it's, the kids do just a wonderful job. It's probably about 15 windows. The businesses come out, they give them popsicles. It's kind of my, kind of my favorite thing about window painting. I would like to thank Freehold DPW as well as the Fire and Police Departments for all they do for us for this event. And I especially want to thank all the businesses downtown that participated this year. As we said, we had 76 windows this year. Now, I would like to ask Rebecca Pola Castro and Annette Piazza to come on up, please. Rebecca is the district's communications and project coordinator. Thank you, Rebecca, for capturing the honors to the students with your foreknowledge. And Annette. Annette coordinates all the information given to the art teachers and provides us with what we need for the awards. She also helps coordinate the school bands for our upcoming parade on the 27th. Annette, our committee is still grateful for all your hard work to ensure this event is a success. Thank you for always making sure we have what we need for both events and also for answering my unending questions. There are a little less this year. It was a little better this year, but we really appreciate you. So now, I would like to ask Judy Guy to come up and assist with the awards. Judy is my right hand for this event, and I cannot imagine its success without her. If we did not have such amazing volunteers who donate countless hours of their time, we cannot offer all of these events. I didn't expect to have so many of our Spooktacular Committee. So if you guys could stand, mark you as well. It is a lot of hours. I want to thank our volunteer judges, Jeff Friedman, Lynn Reichd, and Leslie Delly for taking on the impossible task of judging this year's 76 windows. They chose two honorable mentions in addition to our first, second, and third-place windows. And here we go. So our first honorable mention is Marlboro High School, Principal Dr. David Bleakley. The painting is "Dracula in Friend Window" at B&amp;E Laxmith. And the student is Olivia Kokoska. I'm sorry if I'm not saying that correctly. Her teacher, Ms. Fraser, will come and accept it on her behalf. Thank you. Congratulations. Our second honorable mention is Freehold High School. The principal is Dr. Levetta Ross. The painting is "Edward Scissorhands" at Leela Salon. The students are Caroline Samoya, Alan Carr, and Guadalupe Cruz Flores. The teachers are Dan Finaldi, Jenna Mizetta, and Jeanne Coon Hooker. Assistant Principal Art Supervisor is Mr. Rodney Taylor. And by the way, this is at the barber's, so it's perfect. They were outside taking pictures with scissors and all that. It was really great. That's fine. Third place is Coltsnick High School, Principal Dr. Brian Donahue. The painting is "Cubist Frankenstein." The window is at Urban Barbershop. The students are Goldie Cohen and Caitlin Paloma. Teachers are Lauren Haberman and Audrey Lipking. Art Supervisor is Ms. Jennifer Gerges. Great job, you guys. Second place is Howell High School, Principal Mr. Jeremy Braverman. The painting is "Beetlejuice," and it was at Habitat for Humanity. The student is Cecilia Kavanaugh. Teachers are Sarah Materia and Colleen Merff. Assistant Principal Art Supervisor is Ms. Michelle England. Come on up. And now, first place is Freehold High School, which I love that that's where we are.
Yes.
The principal is Dr. Levetta Ross. The painting is "Audrey Two." Window is at Leela Salon. The student is Alexandra Brekoff and Bailey De Nicola. Teachers Danielle Finaldi, Jeanne Bokeh, and Jenny Mizetta. Assistant Principal Art Supervisor is Mr. Rodney Taylor. So I just want to thank the Board for inviting us here tonight again, and congratulations to all of our winners. All of the paintings are just amazing. Every year they are.
As Maureen mentioned, I was her coach here, but actually, Maureen is 80% and Judy 20%. This is her second year. She did a phenomenal job. And I want to thank her on behalf of the committee and the regional district and myself. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of our winners. We are going to proceed, take like a two-minute break. We're going to go through our board agenda. But the artists and families are free to leave.
So we do not have any board reports tonight. Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. All changes are contained on the yellow sheet in the back of the room. They are additions to existing resolutions. They are additions to existing resolutions. In G3, approval of appointments. G6, approval of change of status. G7, approval of leave of absences. In addition, there are two new resolutions that have been added. They are I5 and I6. I5 is a bid renewal for snow removal. And I6 is bid re-removal for the salt application related to the snow removal. So in addition to the pre-prenced agenda, those items.
Thank you. We do have public participation tonight, and we have Sarah Rottendecker, our president of our teachers association, would like to speak. Hi, Sarah.
So, good evening. On behalf of the Freehold Regional Education Association, I wanted to take a moment to thank the administration for their support in policy and practice as we began the 2024-2025 school year with a ban on cell phones in instructional spaces. I can't overemphasize how difficult the past few years have been to engage students and provide meaningful instruction while competing with personal tech. The membership overwhelmingly sought to eliminate this distraction, but it would not have been possible without the support of Dr. Hazel and other key administrators. I'm happy to report that we are navigating this new way along with the students, but it has been overwhelmingly positive. The Association will be hosting a number of events throughout the year centered around the theme of untangling ourselves from tech and distractions that can interfere with community sense of self and learning. We invite the community to join us, starting with the reading of "The Anxious Generation". I hoped to have the books tonight, but we are still awaiting their delivery, and we will distribute them through the buildings. We did, in fact, purchase a copy for everybody on the board, so we will be getting one for each of you and the nearly 200 community members who requested copies and wish to be a part of this important discussion. Thank you.
Mrs. Rottendecker, it's kind of interesting to see some states are still toying with the back California, New York, and it just seems like the Freehold Regional just did. It just did. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to approve G1 through G10? Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion, vote call?
Mr. Asutola? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Coward? Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Lavin? Mr. McCab? Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
We're going to move to program operations, building, transportation, and our physical plant. May I have a motion to approve H1 through I6? Diana? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, motion?
Mr. Asutola? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Coward? Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Lavin? Mr. McCab? Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
We're going to go to educational programs and administration. May I have a motion to approve items J1 through K1? And Mrs. Capiello? Discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion, vote call?
Mr. Asutola? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Coward? Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Lavin? Mr. McCab? Mr. Messinger? Mr. Bruno?
Does any board members have old business?
I just wanted to recognize, I don't know if people were aware, that Fred Zuck passed away this week. He was one of the founders of the, actually was founder of the Learning Centers, which is kind of bedrock of our district. And he worked in the district from 1971 to 2004. He was a social studies teacher, social studies supervisor, and then he was the supervisor of the Learning Center at Township and Marlborough. He retired in January 2004, but he made a big... He was the first person to have actual learning centers within a regional high school district. And it's been the model that has been excitingly successful. He was on Disloba Beach for a time.
I just have a personal comment to make. I want to thank people on the board and people in the Freehold regional community for their support the last few weeks with the passing of my sister. I really probably couldn't have gotten through it all with the support of all of you, so thank you. You truly are like a second family. I appreciate it. New business? Any new business, board?
Mr. Bruno, if I could?
Yes, please.
I just want to congratulate all of the bands for their wonderful performance last week at the band festival and also the Spooktacular winners for their beautiful artwork. And also all those who participated, even those who are not winners, for beautifying Freehold, spookifying Freehold Borough with their wonderful artwork.
Thank you. Okay. Any more new business? Not hearing any. We're going to move to adjournment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Mrs. Capiello? May I have a second? All in favor? Is that game still going on? Moving to adjournment.